It's great. Okay, find the button there. Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask that our Clerk Wykoff please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers present establishing a quorum are Councilmembers Fulter, Walker, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we did hear at an earlier meeting that Councilmember Hanford would not be here this evening. Also, Councilmember Beaumont is not going to be here due to a scheduling conflict. And Councilmember Walker is also in chambers and has just entered in. He stepped out briefly. So unless there's objection, we will consider both Councilmember Beaumont and also Councilmember Hanford's absence as excused. Saying no objection, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that'll be Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Fisher. Thank you. And I would like to make one adjustment to the agenda unless there's objection from council. We do have two proclamations. One of the proclamations, we do have somebody that we learned is here to receive it. So I'd like to go ahead and present that proclamation under announcements and presentations and do that as Item 5.1 and move what's currently 5.1 to 5.2. So unless there's objection, I'll go ahead and do that. All right, seeing no objection, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comments. Before I read the long script, is there anybody here this evening that would like to provide public comment? Nobody signed up? Anybody want to provide public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll spare us the script. Good evening, Zach. I hope you're doing well today. I see you on the screen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on with a slight amendment that we've made to the agenda to Item 5.1, which is now just reading in the proclamation for International Overdose Awareness Day. And so recognizing August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day, whereas North America continues to experience the highest drug-related mortality rate in the world, accounting for one in four drug-related deaths globally, and whereas addiction is a disease, and International Overdose Awareness Day aims to raise awareness of overdose and reduce the stigma of substance use-related deaths, and whereas International Overdose Awareness Day acknowledges the grief felt by families and friends who have been impacted by this, and whereas this day provides an opportunity for people to publicly mourn for loved ones, some for the first time, without feeling guilt or shame, and whereas this day seeks to send a strong message to current and former substance users that they are valued and supported, and whereas this day raises awareness of the need to treat drug-related harm as a public health issue and invest in practices that save lives in both communities, and whereas International Overdose Awareness Day provides an opportunity for Monroe residents to stand beside those who have lost loved ones to an overdose and to support those who have substance abuse disorder and are diligently working toward recovery, and whereas the Monroe community has several facilities that provide services for substance abuse, such as Recovery Center at Evergreen Health Monroe, Ideal Options, CMAR, and Concord Clinics. Now, therefore, Jeffrey Thomas, Mayor of the City of Monroe, Washington, to hereby recognize August 31st, 2024, as International Overdose Awareness Day and encourage Monroe's residents and businesses to cultivate a culture of caring and enhanced engagement around addiction and eliminate the stigma associated with addiction. And today, we have April Provost from Ideal Options to receive this. And April, I'm going to ask you to just come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Thank you, council. As many of you already know, I had spent most of my addiction in the Sky Valley region. I am grateful for my five and a half years of recovery, and it's been my honor to be able to come back to this community and bring treatment services to this community. I brought my peer, Erin Lopez, from Ideal Option as well, and she is stationed in Monroe and goes out into the field daily, working with members of our community suffering with SUD. It is our honor and our privilege to be here tonight and to be accepting this proclamation. And please know that we have an unwavering commitment to this community so that we can find pathways of recovery for all that are suffering and keep them healthy as possible. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and bring this up to present this to you. I'll invite the councilmembers to come forward with me. All right, thank you very much, everybody. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That is 5.2 now. That is the 2023 Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee Report on Public Records. And Sheri Simmerson is going to be giving that update.
Thank you, Sheri. Evening.
Oh, there you go. With me tonight is Patricia Pendry, and so she'll be here to talk a little bit about the police department as well. So we'll go ahead and get started. As most of you are aware, the state back in 2017 created a process in which cities can, and state agencies, can submit records, information about kind of what we're doing and how that's progressing, and this information can go to the state legislator. The statistics that we're going to provide are for the 2022 J-Larke report, but the numbers that we're going to give you tonight are our 2023 numbers. So just so you have that as a point of comparison. Next slide. So here, we just wanted to kind of start adding in a little more information about statewide statistics. So we've kind of included the number of agencies that are submitting. One thing I thought was interesting to note that about 41% of all records requests through the state are cities and towns, which is where we land. $102, 893, $606 million were spent responding to public records requests statewide. $7.7 million was spent on litigation, and about 57% of the reporting agencies had claims that were filed. I'm happy to point out that the City of Monroe had no penalties for 2023. We've also included just some statewide examples of litigation penalties that other agencies have faced, so you can kind of have a reference that they can run from $18,000 all the way up to $1 million. Recently, there's a court ruling, we just provided a really high one that happened at the State Patrol, for $750,000, and just kind of it points out some of the reasons why they had such a high penalty. So as you can see, we've kind of been increasing our numbers. As I kind of predicted last year, we went over about 1,500 this year. The statewide average is about 1,724. So we're kind of right in where a lot of the agencies are in the state. Here, we just wanted to probably just kind of have a visual of the types of records that are going out. As you can see, there are a large portion, there are police and collision reports. There is a large where we have to search for records, but we may not have records that are responsive to the requester. And then court records, community development, technology records, emails, and things like that. And then we have general records and then body cameras. You can see that sliver in there, and we probably anticipate that sliver to get bigger as time goes on. So here, we just wanted to kind of give you a little snapshot of kind of multi-department requests with finance, police, parks, city clerk's office, the police department and city clerks. And so we just kind of gave you some example of, like, one request, there were eight different redaction codes that we had to search through hundreds and hundreds of documents for to keep an eye out for. So it can get really complicated when you're applying that many different redactions. Pending requests for over month, this is just one that we kind of want to show. When we see them kind of carrying over month to month, that's just telling us that the number of requests are getting larger and more complex. And that's why we see these numbers kind of staying, getting bigger and bigger, because we're not able to accomplish filling requests as within that 30-day timeline. So they just kind of get carried over. So you've kind of got them coming in and going out, and then one's carrying over from month to month. As you can see, we're kind of at the back row for 2024, but you can still see that, you know, five months out of this year, we have increases compared to last year. So I think we're going to probably stay pretty consistent around that 1,500 to 1,600 mark. But we, one thing that has kind of come to our attention, are there are three very large companies that are doing anonymous requests for people? And so one company just submitted about 75,000 public records requests nationwide. So we got three or four of those requests that we're working on. And so that's, that could change our dynamic significantly with these companies doing these anonymous requests. So we don't really know what that's going to, how that's going to impact us, but we're going to probably see some change in that regard as well. Request by department, just here, just to kind of show you where obviously you can see the lion's share there is held by the police department. Pretty much, looking like things kind of stayed pretty much the same for each department. Obviously, the clerk records, you see that there's been an increase, and the part of that reason is I've started adding myself, our department, when I'm helping other departments to better reflect kind of how we're supporting other units in our department throughout the city. Types of requests, I went ahead and added what the statewide percentages were that we saw. So that kind of shows you how Monroe is comparison, you know, with statewide numbers. And we had three areas that were, you know, quite a bit higher than what the state average was, and that was insurer, which goes along with our collision reports that we have, government agencies, and then organizations, which would be businesses. So we're a little bit higher in those categories compared to statewide, but we wanted to go ahead and add those numbers so you could kind of see how that adds up. Again, we're happy to show Monroe there that we have a higher than the state average on how many requests we complete within five days. So we're at an 81% response rate. Our cost per request is pretty consistent with the statewide number of 243, and we're at 223. So again, pretty, pretty much, you know, what we're seeing through the state. This next slide, this is an excerpt from the state J-Larke report, and I just thought it was really an interesting visual of costs of records requests, cost to manage, and then the last column is how much we get back for the work that we do. And you can see they barely, I don't even know if they graph up there. They're pretty low there. So again, it's something that is costing us a lot of money to manage and maintain these records without a lot of cost coming back into the city to support that process. Here's a picture of our exemption code list, where something that that really helps us move our work along a lot faster by using these specific codes. But for our 1,536 requests, we had 28 that we denied in full, 472 were partially denied or redacted, and then about 101 were abandoned because the请求er didn't pay, didn't want to pick up their records. So that's a little bit, you know, we can do all the work, and then they, they don't want to get their records. So that's for that. This is kind of just showing how, as you can see, we're really happy that 70% of our records are done electronically. So we're giving out records in electronic form. As you know, the grant that we had, all of our community development records are now all electronic, so that process has gone a lot smoother. No more trips out to the archive room, digging around for records, bringing them back into the office, scanning them, and then bringing them back out. So we're working through the building department next. We're about halfway through the building department, and so again, we're hoping to kind of get all those records available electronically. As our city policy, we want to make sure that we're being fair to all of our请求ers, and so we kind of put them in categories. And the purpose of that is if someone says, well, this person got their request within five days, but you took two weeks for mine, it's because we consider them in categories of how long it takes us to pull the amount of records, how much analyzing we have to do. So again, we're just kind of showing you where it kind of, the bulk of it is in that five days or less, which is really good that we can get those out. The statewide average for requests is 2.9 hours, so that's a lot when you consider we have 1,536 records, if you're averaging, you know, 2.9 hours on it. Processing requests, again, we had a slight increase here in what we're estimating our cost to be to handle public records. Again, you can kind of see the statewide cost is very, very high, and we kind of put some of the reasons we felt that increase was there. Records management, this was a bit of an increase, and part of that is we calculated out staff hours for our five public records roundup days, getting ready for the move. So that was a significant investment, but we're really happy with the end result. And then we've also went from three months of body camera up to 12 months of body camera. So there was quite a bit of an increased cost there. So we kind of demonstrated kind of what those increases were for. And then next is body cameras, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Patricia.
I'm delighted to be here, and I really want to thank Sheri for the work that she put into this report. Thank you, Sheri. So last year was the first year that we had body cameras for all of our officers, and as a result, we've seen a, an uptick in the number of requests that are being made for these requests, for these body cameras. We're finding some challenges with the software, the redaction software to redact body camera footage. We are doing some testing of some other software so we can find the most ideal software that will help us make these redactions in a timely manner. Some of the common redactions that we have to really watch out for are juveniles, interiors of residences, medical facilities, driver's licenses have to be redacted, the DOL registration documents, and the in-car computer screen. And what makes this challenging is if you have five or six different officers responding to a scene, we are having to redact six different body cameras. It isn't like taking a PDF document, you have one copy, and you're, you're just redacting the one document. We actually have to look at all six of those body cameras and appropriately redact those. Also, when you're redacting with the software, it's challenging because if you have six different subjects or items that need to be redacted, you're going to be dealing with six potentially more tracks that you have to redact, and then there's also the audio. So there was a one-minute clip I thought we would provide. This is actually a fairly simple situation, but there was also audio we had to redact because the officer verbalized the individual's driver's license number. So the MDT screen has to be redacted because that will show criminal history information.
Yep, it is suspended in the third degree.
And now the officer's grabbing the registration documents, so we had to redact that as well.
Don't be playing this game.
So this is a simpler example, but we just completed redacting one hour of footage. It took five hours to complete the redaction for this particular piece of body camera footage.
So again, just a really easy kind of routine kind of video, but we just wanted to kind of give you an idea of some of the challenges. So it's not just the computer, it's the paperwork coming in, it's what the officer's saying out loud, so you've got that audio redaction, and so those kind of all come into play. As far as highlights for this year, we're really happy, the roundup days that we got done, that carried over into this year, and we were able to do some additional scanning and got those records done. We continue to do training for all of our new staff that come on, and that includes seasonal interns, part-time people, they all get the same records training. We are continuing to monitor and maintain all of our records, you know, our text messages and our emails and all of those, our website, all those things, we're making sure Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, all of those things, we have to maintain those records for a certain amount of time, so we're working, we're doing that. We've implemented the body cameras for all the officers for the year, and then we're continuing to conduct routine destruction. I know the police department's really working on scanning a lot of the files and getting them all electronic for things that we have to maintain for a long time. So those are some of our highlights. And then for our goals, we just are continuing our process of, you know, we want to work on getting a records management policy for the entire city. We want to evaluate our Laserfish versus, if we're going to do a SharePoint, Smarsh versus a Microsoft Purview. You know, like I said, there's lots of projects that we're going to be working on, and so we'll be happy to kind of bring you reports on that when we come and do this report every year. So that's all we had for you, but if you guys have any questions, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Earlier, you said that, that we're pretty close to the state average on cost per record, and I did the math, and a $20 difference in average cost per record for our 1,500 records is $30,000. So thank you, guys. That's amazing. Saved the city $30,000.
Yep.
A few different questions. The body cameras and the cost for the redactions on them, do you think that, that it, is it going to be about 80% of the cost of the total public record? Money that is spent, if not more?
Not at this time. I had really expected, once we implemented the body camera program, I think it was approximately October of 2022, that we would see a significant increase for body camera footage in 2023. We haven't seen that. I'm keeping my fingers crossed because we're still able to keep up on those requests without incurring any overtime. But there is an increase, and I do anticipate that continuing to go up as people realize that it's available.
And then the company that you guys said was doing these huge requests, do you think that that's like consumer reporting agencies like LexisNexis? Like, is that going to become a?
No, some of them are people who want to get records from the city, but they want to be anonymous. So they'll hire these companies to make the requests on their behalf. Some of the other companies are trying to garner information that's publicly available to create these AI to help other companies know how to make requests for proposals for their company. The problem is, is when they're asking for every bill that we've ever received, those are all in hard copy, and so we would have to scan those and, you know, but fortunately, the city does have a fee process, so unless we get our payment, we don't do the work until we get the payment. So then we know that that's something that they're wanting. So the four that we got from this international company, they did not make the payment, so we're still have one that we're waiting to see if they're going to want to pay on, but the other ones, they have paid for the records to get scanned that they wanted. So it is just going to be interesting to see, you know, they, they almost appear like a bot request, like it's some sort of a spam, but it's really not. It's, they are just putting out, trying to get as much public information as they can and create these AI-generated informational for different companies.
I would like to add that to that question. We are starting to receive requests from a company that is looking for body camera footage. They claim to be a media outlet. Fortunately, because they are not a victim or a witness in a criminal case, we get to charge them to redact the body camera footage. So as Sheri said, we don't start the work until they pay at least a deposit. I am starting to see them paying for maybe half of them at this point, so that's where my concern is, where we're going to see an increase.
And, and those companies pay the same price as a victim would?
A victim does not get charged.
Okay, gotcha. I, I guess this is just a statement, and it sounds like this is just ripe for reform, and I think that, I don't know, we as a city or at some point, government agencies need to start kind of sounding the alarm on this. I don't know if residents, I assume that they would be blown away to hear that 340,000 of their tax dollars are going towards this, and I assume that those, those big agencies, the companies or organizations that are just combing for data, whether it be to help with legal costs or starting legal cases, it's just, it's incredible, and I think it's really sad, and I think it's the exploitation of what was a Public Records Act being, I think, an item or legislation that was really good for the citizens of Washington. It's just, it's pretty tough, knowing so much money of theirs is being lost to what could be police officers on the, on the ground. So anyways, I'm sorry, I guess that's, that's talking out loud. I personally feel like we, we should start elevating this issue because this is crazy, and thank you, guys. Thank you for the work you're doing. The litigation costs especially being zero, it's, that's awesome. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fulter?
I think that that was very well spoken, Jake. I, I think my concern is also making the public aware that this, this is a real cost to us, even though you guys are saving us money, and can I say that these are the kind of detail stuff that some of us just don't like and don't do well. So when I listen to how much it takes for you to do this, I'm very appreciative of your work and also the fact that you're just, you're being good stewards of our money, and that's, that's important to us.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item, the next item that we have on the agenda is underneath my script, probably for the next item. All right, next item's on item number six. This is item 6.1, public hearing, 60% petition for Monroe 30 annexation. And our planner, Marero, is going to be presenting. And let me go ahead and just check this out real quick. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to read the, the script in first. So again, the next item on the agenda is item 6.1. This is a public hearing that I mentioned previously. Before we proceed with the hearing, please note that the rules and procedures that apply to this hearing are available in the agenda packet and on the city's website. To summarize, after the hearing is open, city staff will present a staff report, and councilmembers may ask questions for clarification of staff or wait until another time. So the public hearing is now open. The rules of order for this legislative public hearings are, hearing are as follows. A, unless otherwise expressly allowed by a majority vote of the council, oral public comments during a public hearing are limited to in-person attendees only. Remote oral public comment is allowed only to be, only to the extent specifically required by RCW 42.30.240 subsection 2. B, all speaker comments shall be made from the podium unless the speaker has been authorized to participate remotely. Any person making comments shall be requested to give their first Any person making comments shall be requested to give their first, will be requested to first give their name. C, comments shall be directed to the presiding officer, which would be the mayor in this situation, and the council body as a whole, and must be reasonably germane to the topic of the hearing. D, any person, any making quote "out of order" comments or taking actions that disrupt the meeting may be subject to removal from the meeting. E, there will be no demonstrations or interruptions during or at the conclusion of any person's comments or presentation. F, the rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing to give every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no person is intimidated by others when exercising their right of free speech and participation. For the record, I am informing all parties interested in these proceedings that the city clerk has already forwarded to the city council all timely written or otherwise recordable comments that have been submitted regarding the subject matter of this proposed hearing. And I'm now going to ask you to go ahead and give your staff briefing and then we'll see if there are questions for clarification for the council and then we'll go to the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to present the Monroe 30 annexation, 60% annexation petition public hearing. The Monroe 30 annexation area encompasses approximately 29.89 acres and is located in the Monroe urban growth area, west of Robin Hood Lane and east of the Monroe Woodlands. The site map and future land use map are also attached to your pocket for reference if you would like to take a look at the exact location. So next, I would just like to give a recap of the history of this project because we've been working on it since the beginning of the year and I'm taking it over for Planner Amy Bright. So I'll be happy to answer questions along the way since I'm coming in relatively new to this project. The applicant, David Toyer, on the behalf of JM1 Holdings LLC, submitted the 10% annexation petition to the city on January 8th, 2024. At the February 20th council meeting, a date was set for the initial meeting to commence the annexation. The initial meeting was held at the February 27th council meeting. And at the March 26th council meeting, the council passed resolution number 2024-007. This accepted the notice of intention to commence annexation. During these meetings, the council expressed the desire to require a park dedication and middle housing for the future development of the annexation area. This will be achieved through a development agreement with a developer. The applicant has since submitted a draft development agreement and that will come before you at a later date. The 60% petition was circulated and 100% of the property owners in the annexation area signed the petition. The 60% petition was submitted to the city on June 17th. The signatures were certified by the Snohomish County Assessor's Office and this public hearing is required per RCW 35A.14.130 and was noticed in the Herald and posted onsite. We did receive one public comment and that public comment is attached to the agenda packet. The next steps, if council tonight accepts the 60% petition, the notice of intention will be submitted to the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. The BRB has 45 days to review and if approved, then the council can take action and approve the annexation ordinance. The applicant is here, I believe, via Zoom and he would like to make a statement. That's David Toyer and also he can't answer any questions that you may have tonight. The requested action tonight is to accept the 60% petition for the Monroe 30 annexation and authorize staff to submit the NOI for annexation to the Snohomish County BRB. And I can answer any initial questions that you have before we accept a public comment.
Are there any questions from the council? All right, thank you. And Zach, can you clarify something for me? Because I've just read in a script that says that oral public comment must be done in person. Can you, it does say that the council can make a vote as to whether or not to allow somebody to speak via a remote connection. Can you clarify a little bit about how this might be different? Or if it is governed by what I just read, what sort of action would need to be taken? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the council has established a baseline rule that only oral public comment in person will apply for this proceeding. If the council wants to expand that to allow for remote public comment, they can do that by a simple majority vote. My recommendation is that if you, if the council does go down that path and authorize remote comment to be taken, that it's taken for all parties and it's not just limited to selectively to one or two or other parties. It should be a uniform allowance for anyone who wants to speak. Does that clarify, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and I'm going to also ask another clarifying question. And again, if this gets into legal issues where we need to do an executive session, please advise. But the statement was also made to the effect that since the party is representing the applicant or is the applicant, one of the two, that the applicant could respond to any questions. Our normal process for public comment would be that somebody gives up to three minutes worth of public comment in that the council doesn't go back and forth with somebody providing comments. So just for clarity, do I understand that this person would only be able to provide public comment if the council voted in the majority to do so and that there would not be going back and forth in this situation?
If I understand your question correctly, Mr. Mayor, the public hearing process under the city's rules of procedures is not and is not intended to be a back and forth dialogue between speakers and the council. If the council wishes to ask questions, that is their prerogative to do that. And they can, they can certainly do that as part of their proceeding. Is that your, is that your question, Mr. Mayor?
To ask questions is one thing, but the intent is not to go back and forth with somebody who's on the podium. So if the intent is not that council would ask questions in a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial hearing and that there would be responses from the podium or remote?
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is not a quasi-judicial proceeding. An annexation proposal of the type before the council tonight is a legislative proposal. So we're operating under the more relaxed legal rules related to legislative propositions rather than quasi-judicial ones.
Okay. So in short, it sounds like public comment like normal, not an expectation of going back and forth with Q and A with people from the podium or online?
Correct. There's no online comment unless the council votes to allow for that. If they do, that should be uniformly applied to anyone wishing to speak remotely. And the council in its discretion may ask questions of speakers during the testimony process.
All right, thank you. All right. So with that, council heard the responses as I did. At this time, I'll ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this matter. Unless council wishes to impose a different limitation, there will be a three-minute time limit on each speaker. Your time will begin when you introduce yourself and provide, and we ask that you also provide your area of residence or association with the city or the project. Please be respectful of all speakers and of the hearing procedure itself. Please note that, please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the city council. It's not intended to be a question and answer session. Again, within our rules there. And just second council member, so just, I think I'm coming right to you, but I want to make sure I haven't missed something. All right. Go for it.
If we're, if we vote to make an exception in this case, it's only for this hearing, it's not forever.
That is correct, yes. So what the rule would be, that if the council votes in the majority to allow for oral remote testimony, that it would only be for this item. What I'm understanding is that anybody else who happens to be remote today would also be afforded the same opportunity to provide remote testimony. Concur, Zach. Zach's going like this. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and ask the council if you wanted to make a motion to allow for remote comment on this agenda item this evening. Go ahead, Councilmember Foulter?
Would you mind reading that? And I can say, yes, that's my intention.
Looking to see if the council would move to allow for remote testimony for the agenda item that is currently before us for this evening.
That is my motion. Thank you.
I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Walker. Zach, are you fine with the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
While I personally don't have an issue with people, I don't think it's right to do it in a meeting. I think you'd want to advertise so that if we're going to allow that, because there may be people that couldn't make it and then they didn't show up in a virtual environment because they didn't think it was an option. So I'll be voting against, even though I don't care if that makes sense. Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Walker?
Can we just confirm one more time that this wouldn't be the precedent for meetings going forward? I thought I heard Zach say it one way the second time, but, okay.
Yep. Zach, you would concur that this does not set a precedent for any other public hearing and also that it would not set a precedent in the event that this item came back before us because there was a limit to this evening only for this agenda item only.
My understanding is that was the form and intent of the motion and if that's the case, the premise is correct. There's no precedent being set by this particular action by the council.
I appreciate everybody's risk aversion and wanting to clarify things for the record. So thank you. All right, any other discussion or question on the motion that is currently before you? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion fails 3-2 with council members, I'm just going to call you Hanford because your name's right there. Councilmember Fisher, Councilmember Heather, Foulter. I know who you are. It's just I'm looking for signs and you're like this. And Councilmember Gamble voting against. So motion passes. All right, thank you. It fails. I said fails, right? Oh, I meant to say fails 2-3. I, it's getting up at 4. I'm sorry. I'm going to start having coffee before I come here. And then the air is at least will be faster. Okay, so the motion did fail. We are not allowing for public comment this evening remotely on this agenda item. Thank you. All right, with all that taken, taken into consideration, we're going to go ahead and move to public comment. The person who I have who has signed up to speak on this is Eddie Nonskach. Nonskala, okay. Please come forward and state your name for the record and then we'll go ahead and start the three-minute timer. Thank you.
The reason I say this is because there is a significant amount of wildlife around here. Ionees, hawks, owls, trees in that specific area that I see. There's also toxic traffic coming from the neighborhoods of the community. Also, two hundred. And our access to this property is very concerned that the non-traffic can impact the environment, but be against progressive agents. I have seen people who dump construction equipment, who use the particular buildings along the perimeter of that area. I've seen people actually dump these into storm areas in that area. And so what I'm basically here to say is that this area is not protected. There is a protected area adjacent to that road. And so I just want the council to understand that this developer annexing this property is a scam. We're doing the risk impacting it by far more than what people are willing to risk. So with that said, I am assured that this is a city needs to mostly track the laws and personally the land area, the materials is available there.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak to this item? All right, not seeing anybody. I will ask the council if you have any additional questions to ask of staff. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Nina. Do we have any indication on what kind of zoning the county might adopt after their comprehensive plan is done?
So the pre-zoning for the city for that property is R7, residential, seven units per acre.
I think, I think I recall the county maybe doing, maybe already passing it a law that may have changed their zoning in most areas to R7. I could be wrong. The reason I'm asking that is because my concern is that whether the city annex is this or not, if we didn't and development were to proceed, it could still develop and be just, just as dense under county zoning as it would under city zoning. So that 200-unit build could happen there regardless if, if that is, if that's correct, if that zoning is R7 through the county as well.
Yes, so their zoning is a little different. It's residential 72,000, but it's basically the same as the pre-zoning for the city, which is R7.
So to clarify, it would be residential 7,200, 7,200?
It would be seven units. So our zoning is R7, so single-family residential, seven units per acre. But the, but the county is a 7,200, so.
Thank you. I heard 72,000.
Sorry, sorry, 7,200 square feet, yes, per lot, yes.
And I would note also by annexing into the city, they would then be contributing to city services and we'd actually have city PD going up there as opposed to it being in the county with a sheriff. As an example for resources.
But you are correct, Councilmember Walker, that it could be developed at this point under the county. So yes, so the density, I'd have to do the numbers, but I think it would be relatively the same density.
Yeah, I think my concern with this for the other council members would just be that if the trade-off is that if it was not annexed by the city, the development is going to happen at just the same density anyway and it's not going to be under the cities, it's not in the city's domain to even make traffic laws around it. So the county, I'd be concerned. Love to hear what you guys think.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walker is in our urban growth area too, so that's something else to remember. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble. I think your flag is up.
No, that's exactly where my head's at as well. I mean, it's within the urban growth area. We know we, we have to grow. We're kind of limited on where we can go. We've tried to go other areas. You know, I appreciate, you know, the speaker tonight, you know, from the, and the last comments about making sure that we are doing the right things in that area. That would put it within the city's purview to do exactly that. I have a lot more confidence there and we're going to have to extend services most likely anyway. So to me, it just makes total sense.
And we do have regulations also around critical areas and wildlife and things like that. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So hopefully this discussion will, can kind of ease your mind a little bit. Quick calculation, the 7,200 acres, 43,560 square feet or something. The county would be at six houses per acre and we're at seven. Again, I agree with the other council members, I think. For the residents that are up there, this would be a much better approach to have an annexation with the city. You can actually come down here and talk to us. You can talk to city staff. Going to the county and talking about some of your concerns is going to be a bit more arduous. And so with the residents up there and the plans that we have, I think it's going to be easier for you to make sure that we're doing the correct things. And like Councilmember Campbell said, I was having the same problem with names as you were. I was like, uh. Councilmember Campbell said, I was having the same problem with names as you were. I was like, uh. I have much more confidence in how the city is actually going to react to this and how we're going to build that out.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
I also just want to clarify, just for residents, those here tonight and those that might be listening. In this case, I feel a lot better about the council and the future Monroe mayor, future Monroe council being good stewards of land that is in our city than the county, because if that 200-unit development ends up there or not, all of those tax revenues are going to go to the county. It's going to be decided on by a council that's in Everett rather than in the city of Monroe. Those impact fees that are going to be paid by the developer are going to go towards the county and county parks that might end up in Everett as well or in Maltby rather than Monroe. So I would rather we be able to talk to our residents about their community as opposed to the county, because I want to help them. I don't want them to have to appeal to Everett and the Snohomish County Council every time they have an issue. I'd rather talk to them directly.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Gamble?
Point of clarification is the hearing.
No, I have not closed the hearing yet. I, when you are done asking questions of staff, which we'll pretend you are, I will go ahead and close the hearing, and then if you would like to deliberate further, a motion should be put on the floor.
Yeah.
Are you?
That's why.
Okay. So is there any other deliberation? Or I'm sorry, any other questions for staff? We'll say that that's what we were just doing there. Okay. And that not being the case, if there are no further questions for staff, I'm going to go ahead and conclude the public hearing unless there are objections from the council. Seeing none, the hearing is now closed, and I turn to the council. Consideration, a motion is on the screen. Go ahead, sorry. That's where I acknowledge you.
Okay, there you go. I move to accept the 60% petition for the Monroe thirty annexation and authorize staff to submit a notice of intention for an annexation to Snohomish County Boundary Review Board.
All right, thank you. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action that is shown on the screen, or requested motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. All right, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be item number seven. This is consent agenda, and I turn to the council. And insert jeopardy music here. Councilmember Foulter?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written in the packet.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Fisher. Please let the record show that Councilmember Walker left the thank you. We're going to go in chambers tonight. It's like Mad Libs tonight. Left the chambers as the item came forward. And is there any deliberation on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four-zero. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda should be item number eight. Once I get the page flipped. Eight, new business, item eight-point-one, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Lodging Tax Advisory Committee LTAC appointments. And I turn to Mr. McCorkle. Mr. McCorkle?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. As you can see, there are five requested actions of you today regarding Lodging Tax Advisory Committee appointments. Washington state law mandates that LTAC appointments must be reviewed annually by the council, and of these appointments, they must include a five total members, one of which being an elected official who serves as a member and as chair, two lodging business representatives, and then two tourism business representatives. The mayor with staff advertised these vacancies, reviewed applications, and made recommendations inclusive of two new appointments, those being Councilmember Jacob Walker as well as Alex Guzman, and then also three reappointments, those being Karen Sidhu, Doug Hobbs, and Connie Goss. So today in the audience, we do have Alex Guzman, as well as we did have Jacob Walker. Doug Hobbs did inform me that he would not be able to make it tonight as he is working at the state fair. I'm not sure if anybody else is currently online. Karan is online, so with that, I will pass it back to the mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So I have provided separate motions for your consideration. I've done this because occasionally, okay, not occasionally, very rarely, somebody doesn't want to make a motion for somebody, and so doing it separately is just a way of doing that. Please let the record show that Councilmember Walker returned to chambers. So I'm going to go ahead and respectfully request council's consideration for motion number one. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Jacob Walker to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as the elected official and chair with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action item number one, appointing, confirming the mayor's appointment of Councilmember Walker, et cetera. Any discussion on the motion? This is, go ahead, Councilmember Foulter.
Having done this job for four years, I love it. You're going to have a great time. If you have any questions, ask me, but I think it's an important job often overlooked by the rest of the people who go, eh, it's just LTAC. It's a ball. You'll love it, and I heartily endorse you.
And I do thank Councilmember Foulter for her work on this. Historically, it's been the mayor that has acted as the chair for this committee. I did it for six years. I felt that it was important to make sure that we share this opportunity with folks, and so I appreciate that Councilmember Foulter did not reapply this go-around, which obviously allowed for another person to put their name in, and I appreciate you this time being willing to step up and learn something new and do something different. So, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Next motion I'm asking council to consider is to appoint Alejandro Guzman. I'm going to invite Alejandro Guzman to come up and just say a couple of words, just introduce himself since he's here. You can come on. Oh, yes, you're fine there. No, you're fine there. Yes, okay, thank you, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Alejandro Guzman. I, we represent, own, and operate the Best Western, the Sky Valley. It's the only branded hotel in town, so we feel a big responsibility of participating on this because being Best Western, the branded hotel in town, it's a lot of weight. It's a lot of weight, so we want to represent correctly the city. The city's been very good with us. It's been a blessing, and that's it. I guess we like to serve, and we do it on the hotel, and we'd be glad to represent the city.
Thank you. And in full awareness, the committee is supposed to have three people who have a lodging, you know, who contribute to the taxes here. And if the council approves the all five of these people, this will be the first time in my service as mayor and maybe longer where we will have had all five seats appointed. And what that means is that in the past, we've had challenges bringing in any hotel here. This time, we would have all three. And so I respectfully request your consideration to move to appoint Alejandro Guzman. Councilmember Foulter?
Well, you just said the words, but I like to say them too.
Yes.
So I move to appoint Alejandro Guzman to position one of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as a lodging business member with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Gamble for requested action number two on the slide. Any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Just to thank you for putting your name in the hat and doing this. It's very important, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, the next person that we have, oh, you know, let's call for the vote. Let's do that this evening. We're just, we're just, yeah, we're just moving forward here. All right. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Congratulations, board member.
Thank you.
All right, next person that we have is Karan Bier Sidhu, and we had already made arrangements for him this evening since he was not able to make it in person, and he requested. So Kanda here, would you like to say just a couple of words? You're already serving on the, on the committee, so please go ahead.
Yeah, hi. This is Karan Sidhu. I am the owner of Hotel Fairground Inn. This will be my second year on the committee. Because I manage the hotel, I understand how important it is for the city to get the tax and how much important it is, so I want to bring my experience and also help the city. I'm looking forward again this year to work on the Lodging Tax Committee. Sorry, I was very busy today in Everett, so I wasn't able to join. Thank you.
Thank you. I turn to the council. Go ahead, Councilmember Walker?
Karan Bier Sidhu to position two of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as a lodging business member with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Motion from Councilmember Walker, second from Councilmember Foulter for requested action number three in the slide before you. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. I'm trusting there was no deliberation. Sorry about that. All right, next item on the agenda then is request action item number four. This is for Doug Hobbs. Doug Hobbs is not here this evening, as previously stated. I think everybody knows Doug. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
I move to appoint Doug Hobbs to position three of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as Tourism Industry Member with term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, a second from Councilmember Foulter. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Last one then is request action number five. This is regarding Connie Goss. She was not able to make it this evening, and I just respectfully request your consideration to appoint. Go ahead, Councilmember Fisher.
Move to appoint Connie Goss to position four of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as Tourism Industry Member with term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fisher, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for requested action number five, as shown in the agenda bill that is on the screen, rather than the slide. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, thank you very much, Mr. McCorkle. And congratulations, everybody else, for being appointed. Next item on the agenda is item eight-point-two. This is Human Services Administrative Support Services contract with Rachel Adams. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is an opportunity to consider approving a contract to continue human services administrative support. Currently, I have a human services intern in my department, and those internship hours are coming to a close rapidly. So the plan is to have her continue her work as a consultant under the draft agreement that is attached in the packet. She's done a remarkable amount of work in putting together the Poverty 101 class that is coming up here in two weeks. She has helped with the metrics in our grants and tracking all of those, and I really appreciate all that she has done in drafting work reports for our department also.
Thank you very much. Any questions or a motion from the council? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this, and I know this is in keeping with our direction and support of this initiative. You know, obviously, I'm a finance guy, so I initially went, you know, immediately to the fiscal impact, and decisions like this, I look at and I go, hey, if this is the right thing that is toward a program, it's within the budget. We're reallocating funds that are already approved that are not going to be spent in the fiscal year, so I totally support support this because it's in support of this initiative. It's not an impact to the budget, and that's what we ask our operations folks to do, is make these decisions all the time. And you found a way to fund it with the already approved budget, so I'm going to move to approve contract twenty-twenty-four zero-nine-five with Caitlin Harrigan for human services administrative support.
I have a motion from Councilmember Gamble, a second from Councilmember Scarborough for the requested action shown on the screen for item eight-point-two under new business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item eight-point-three. This is Emergency Housing Fund, EHF, Washington Department of Commerce Motel Voucher Program Contracts with Snohomish County and VOAWW, again with Rachel Adams.
Yes. So this opportunity is to approve a contract with the county for the city of Monroe to continue administering the emergency motel voucher funding through our lead agency, Volunteers of America, Western Washington. Recently, the council heard a presentation and a report out on some of the metrics that have come out of that program. Some key changes to the program are that we are limiting participation of clients to those who are Monroe residents residing in Monroe. The success metric is increasing from, I think it's five percent to ten percent, or thirty percent, sorry. And this grant would also generate forty-four thousand dollars for the city of Monroe as the administrative fiscal agent. Attached to this item also is the contract, the proposed contract with Volunteers of America, Western Washington, to administer the program for us, and this action would go ahead and approve both of those contracts in the same same movement. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. Questions or a motion from staff, council? Councilmember Walker? You must have Kyle's microphone.
Kyle turned my mic on earlier, and now I'm having a, yeah, you did swap.
Okay, I can't talk tonight. Nobody can push their buttons. It's great.
Rachel, thank you. I was going through the fine print again. Is there going to be any difference in the insights, the level of insights that we're going to have as a council into the success of the program and the recipients of the vouchers? Is there any differences there?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Is there, are we going to be able to have the same level of insight as a council into the success of the program? Like, who are the recipients? Because I know a lot of our questions the first time around revolved around, like, who are these grants going to be given to? Here's the people that we'd love to see it help. And I think so far, the program has done an amazing job of that. The numbers were great. I could be wrong, but in the fine print, I thought I was seeing that that'll be very restricted this time around. I could be wrong. Is that?
So the demographics of the clients that are being able to be served is determined actually through the Department of Commerce and passed down to us through the county as it was in the first contract. They did make some edits that were highlighted in the packet, and I don't believe that they restricted any further the types of clients that would be allowed to be represented in this program. I'm not sure. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, you know, I knew that you would know the language better than I did.
Okay.
So as long as we can still go, Rachel, who is this helping?
Yes, yes.
That will be the case?
Yes, and if anything, we have requested some more reporting requirements back to the city of Monroe as far as lengths of stay and duration just to, let's see, to to report back on demographics. Length of stays, progress reporting is determined appropriate to help gauge the success of the program.
Awesome.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Foulter.
So I don't remember your exact lingo, but it was basically that we are, we are being told who this service will go to from another above-us type of source.
Yes.
And yet they still know that we are approving it as it has been presented to us as Monroe residents.
Correct.
So we are still.
Yes.
We have confidence in that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and then one more clarification, because you know my view on this. All the funds that are coming from the county are going to be basically passed through for the purpose of the hotel grants. We aren't. We aren't, we aren't realizing any of those for any other purpose other than to go straight to the grants. So we become the handler of them. That is all. It's not our money going into this.
Not entirely true. So the City of Monroe will be receiving $44,000 in administrative, a de minimis amount, and also some funding in operations to support my time and our, some of our peer support outreach and case management specialist contracts time in working with some of the clients.
That seems totally appropriate, because we never want to give public funds to, that seems like a fair exchange there.
And then as far as the Monroe residence piece, that's just determined by the service area that we're, that is a part of who is allowed to be served with these funds. The qualifications for being allowed to be part of the program is still low barrier, which will provide access to the most accessible means to the program.
Low barrier, yet people who have gone through the system, who
Yes.
have been vetted in one way or another. And there was one more question. I wish I could remember, but perhaps after my co-council members are done, it'll pop in my mind. Thank you for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
I guess the piece that I'm struggling with is, the last time we went through this, all the concerns that were associated to that, we're like, it's okay, because we need to trust the coordinated entry program. And that's the part that's been redacted.
So that, that part has to do with when the lead agency is accepting clients into the program, they are encouraging people to voluntarily sign up with coordinated entry and submit their confidential information into the HMIS system, which is run by the county. My understanding is that we can't force people to do that necessarily, and that because it's low barrier, we also can't kick them out for not doing, not entering their personal information into coordinated entry. So yes, that was redacted from this, this contract, but it is still a highly encouraged suggestion that will be continued to be.
Explain to me again, I don't understand the residency piece. I mean, if, how, we have to be a resident of Monroe.
Right. So, the way that we establish residency for people who have been experiencing homelessness has to do with their interaction with our service providers, and our service providers being able to support and document that they are currently residing in Monroe. So that would be how they would establish residency here. That is changing from the first contract where we were administering funds for all of East County. And this, this iteration of the contract is just restricting to Monroe.
Yeah, I guess, I still struggle with, I support it. I mean, I just wrote it on the other side. It's just really hard for me. Because I'm just looking at the other, the flip side, that could be unintended consequences. Because we're not asking for proof of anything, and I get that too. I mean, that's, that's kind of the intent. But we could be putting, you know, a known felon or somebody in a hotel room next to somebody that's visiting the city, and they're not going through the coordinated entry program, and we've lowered the barrier even more, and I had problems with it before. You got me there, like, after the vote. You brought, we brought in and had people talk about coordinated entry and how prescriptive it was, and it's a great thing. So when I saw that removed, I was like, now I'm, now I'm out. And it's not that I don't support, because we need it. But at the same time, I also have a responsibility to protect, you know, citizens, and not having that, that just really concerns me. So.
Got a question. Is there, so you mentioned that these are residents that would be talking with our service providers already. Is there anything that is part of that that's different than what was there before that somehow compensates for not having the coordinated entry?
Not necessarily compensates, but part of the program before that was kind of a safeguard to just putting anyone into the program and letting them stay in a hotel and not do any movement has to do with VOA's case management and the 90-day expectation to have someone in hotel and then out into stable housing. So they're hitting the ground running and working really hard on the holistic case management of these individuals involving some of their, some of the service providers that are also referring them into the program.
So that means that these are people that VOA is already working with? Is that what I understood you to say?
VOA does have some folks who are already, who have been in the hotels since the end of the first contract, which ended on June 30. And this new contract would be backdated to cover the activities that began July 1 through the contract end date. Right now, there's a funding gap in the program.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
So is there something that should or could be put in the contract that would mitigate Councilmember Gamble's concern? Is there something that we should put in there or we should ask to have in there? Or is it somewhat being dictated to us from the county?
It is somewhat being dictated to us from the state, from Department of Commerce guidelines.
So it sounds to me like we, we have to accept it as it is and be very vigilant of the situation that Councilmember Gamble spoke to, or take it away from everyone.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have the ability to just cancel the contract if, if there's a problem?
I do believe that we have the ability to, with certain amount of notice, cancel the contract with the county and also cancel the contract with VOA.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker and then Councilmember Fisher.
Is Exhibit B in the packet? Is that a City of Monroe document? Like, did we create that? It's got our footnote at the bottom.
Page 157 of the packet.
So the attachments on this packet are the award letter, the county's contract, the City of Monroe's contract with VOA. And are you referring to Exhibit B of the City of Monroe's contract?
Yeah, Exhibit B, Statement of Work Motel Vouchers is at the top. The description starts.
I was in the same place.
Yeah.
The Statement of Work, not the, or I'm sorry, the Exhibit?
Exhibit B, so 155 of the packet is where it starts. I don't know if you can do Ctrl F and do HMIS name. That's the top sentence.
Exhibit B of the City of Monroe contract is the completion schedule. The Statement of Work in the City of Monroe contract, oh, is under Exhibit A, but refers to Exhibit B of the county's contract. So that's where I might be getting confused. So I think I'm with you now.
Okay, gotcha. So the, the one that I'm looking at, Exhibit B, Statement of Work Motel Vouchers, section two on eligibility requirements, subcategory C, or sorry, further down, subcategory F, as reasons the agency shall not terminate participants from the project. Did we create that list, or?
No, that is, that is part of the past down.
That has to be a part of it? That's from the county?
Yes.
What's that?
It's just, it's got City of Monroe footnote and the other ones. I don't think did. Okay, that, that was, I guess that's still my primary concern is, I, I don't recall if those contingencies were in the last one. Maybe they were, but the agency shall not terminate participants from the project for any of the following reasons. And then it has a list of reasons that are reasons that I think would be good reason to cancel people from the program. I, I guess my, my question is, if, if we can confirm that that is, that list is from the county and that has to be followed?
I can confirm that that list is from the state, passed down to the county to us.
Okay, second question, slightly unrelated. Would this still include working with Roger Evans and Donnell from St. Vincent?
Gently, yes, of course. They, they, their contracts reside in a separate contract, but operationally, the hours that they spend assisting with case management and creating referrals would track towards our operational costs.
Would it be like a substantial decrease of involvement in the program from this last, this last term?
No, I think that this last term, that was not included in the administrative fees and costs that the City of Monroe was receiving this particular time around. I did a lot more work to identify the amount of administrative and oversight costs that we would need to ask for on this contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fisher? You almost became Councilmember Fulcher.
Just throwing that out there. Doing a little bit of thinking out loud here, I'm struggling with this one. I think everything that has come across that has to do with this issue, I have said I and passed. I personally had some things that were a concern on the last one that came through. And it's really frustrating for me to have this stuff passed down from the state and the county when I know that they don't do nearly as good of a job as we do with this. I do not want to follow the state's lead on anything that has to do with homelessness or substance use disorder. I think they have not handled it well at all. We can go through all kinds of examples. King County housing thing, I mean, we can go through all kinds of stuff. And so I'm kind of struggling with this thing. I, it's hard for me to have those entities tell us what to do when we are doing a much better job. So, yeah, I'm struggling with this one, because I know there's people that need it. I'm having a real hard time following the state with this.
And I will see that the state passing down the guidelines in the contract to the county and to the city is how it is, but the same people who are doing the work on the grounds are the same people who are doing that great work.
From us?
Yes, from us.
And then, as Councilmember Walker said, that list of reasons to not maybe get somebody out of this and get them into maybe a different system that might help more. Again, that, that list looked like a good list, that maybe they need more help than, than just a hotel at this point. So, yeah, I'm struggling with this one a little bit.
Rachel, just, just again, a reminder, how many people has the program helped so far? And how many families?
I believe 30, let me go back up to my agenda. Yes, yes. That sounds accurate to me. And some of, and again, some of those households are still in the program from June 30, anticipating funding continuing through this second phase of the contract. So, right now, there is a funding gap in this program.
Okay. If, do we, does the council have the time if they wanted to, to ask for clarification and have this come back in September?
Yep, absolutely.
What, what does that do since there's a funding gap? Who funds the funding gap?
Right now, it is unfunded, other than VOA is carrying the weight of this contract on their own right now, without support directly from the county and without our support. So they are anticipating, highly anticipating the council's consideration of approving these funds so that they can be reimbursed for their work so far and continue the work that they're doing.
The council's brought up, you know, legitimate questions here tonight. One of the things here is that one of the program elements that was important for at least one, if not a couple of the council members, is not part of this go-around. It would make sense to get some clarity as to why that was removed, how this may or may not be different. And so I'm, I'm not certain, just listening to councilmembers here right now, that, that there would be support to approve it right now. At the same time, I think we all acknowledge that there have been good things that have happened as a result of the program. And it's the same why, it's the same reason why you establish laws, right? I mean, you, you establish laws and everything for that one person out of, what, 47 families? We haven't had that happen yet, but that one person out of what might be 50 or 100, we don't know when that trigger point's going to be, where that person becomes a problem. But I think if there's a way to get some answers to these items and see if there's a way for the, the state or the county to add back in, not a, not a strong suggestion, but a requirement that they participate in that HMS, I want to say HMS metaphor, but I know that's not it. HMIS. I, I, I think, at least I have, but I think the councilmembers have heard that a lot of good things have happened.
Yep.
And I, I don't want to push for a vote tonight if, if there's a way to get their questions answered and if there's a way for us to go back and have a conversation and just say, hey, we heard from our councilmembers, this is important. Can we, can we put it in there? Or if we can't, what are we doing to make certain that some of the points that Councilmember Gamble and others have made are actually being addressed?
Yep. I think that's reasonable.
Okay. So, Councilmember Gamble, just, and I'm going to acknowledge you, but one of the things I'd like to hear from the council is your thoughts, to the extent that you'd like to speak to them on having this come back, like, on September 10th or so, and understanding what sort of questions you would like to have answered. Because I, I think we've, we've all heard, but I just want to make certain that we've heard those things that are most important if you don't feel like you've already expressed them. So, again, the balance here is that we've had a lot of good, and I think we're really concerned about that. We don't know what the percent is, right? It could be a tenth of a percent, it could be one percent, it could be a hundredth of a percent. We just don't know what the number is right now, where we might run into a problem. So, Councilmember Gamble, and then I'll take other flags.
You know, I would welcome that. I mean, I think, you know, Councilmember Fisher and I served, I mean, it was before he was a councilmember, but, you know, on the original H-Pack, this was one of our strategic pillars. Like, I was all in, you know? And so it was hard for me last time. I was one of the, you know, in the minority, and it was largely because we couldn't get some of these questions answered. And then we subsequently did, you know, after we had that vote. You didn't need my vote, you know, at that particular point in time. And you actually got me there. I was like, okay, this makes sense. We had, they came, we talked about coordinated entry and everything that goes into that. So, you know, that's the piece that if we can get answers, you know, to those, then I can have, you know, it's just the unintended consequences in not having that, knowing when you vote on it, that, okay, we don't know if this individual has existing warrants or, you know, a lot of that type of stuff. I just cringe. You know, I would hate for something, you know, to happen. But I know it's a need. I 100% know it's a need. But I also know that we, it, it just doesn't make sense that we can't use logical tools at our disposal to make sure that we don't put our citizens in danger. That's what I get upset about.
I remember that was an important part of the first contract. Yes, thank you.
So I think, Councilmember Walker and then Councilmember Scarborough.
Yeah, I just wanted to say something very similar. I, I've loved the results that we've seen from this. I still believe in the program. I'm just trying to do my due diligence and trying to ascertain why this contract might be a little bit less favorable to the city or, or at least might be giving up some of the things that we, we kind of argued for on the, on the first round of it. In that September 10 follow-up or whatever meeting it comes to, I would just love to know why that coordinated entry program aspect was removed from it, why this contract is going to be slightly different, because I feel like I can, I can trust the system that's been in place a little bit more. I would just like to learn more and make sure that a lot of this, the language disparities aren't, aren't things that we could. aren't, aren't things that we could maybe negotiate with the county in order to make it better for the cities. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Scarborough.
I agree with everything that's been said. The, I think the questions are based on, from councilmember Gamble's position, is what liability do we accept as a city council when we know there's something not in there that vets a felon from being in it? And when something happens, where do we stand? Well, you pass it, you knew it didn't have it in there, and I would love to see it. I'd love to see some more answers too, before I vote on it.
Councilmember Foulter.
Yeah, one of the questions that I had specifically written down was, we don't have to have this person in coordinated entry. It just, it seems like a, it seems like that should be an automatic expectation if we're going to help, or if we're even the conduit for their help, that they should be in a program for it. But I honestly, I think that only addresses half of it. If you listen to councilmember Fisher, I am totally sympathetic to your, your reasoning. I mean, why are we taking, you know, dietary coaching from a guy who's 400 pounds, you know? I mean, it's like, you've got to get your own self in order first, and, and the state is giving us guidelines that they aren't even applying to their own issues. So pardon my political incorrectness, but I don't want to take advice from the state.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
I think some of the reasons why we haven't, why this has been so successful is because of the coordinated entry and because of all the work that staff does and that you do, I think that that's a really important piece. There was something said, you know, it's not just less favorable for the city, but it's also, I feel less favorable for the people that need assistance to not have our proven roadmap on how to actually help these people. So again, I think, I think we're the ones that are doing it right. I say we because we approved it. You guys are actually the ones that are doing it right and out there hitting the streets and doing things. So I appreciate all the work, I appreciate everything that you guys do. Again, I think I have said aye on, on every single thing to put these, put these things in motion, as that, as councilmember Gamble said, and all the way back into H-PAC when I was on planning commission, and this is something that is important to me. And you guys, this is one of the proudest things, I've said it before, of being in the city is the work that, that you guys do and the approval of the dais up here in funding these programs and the direction of the mayor and city administrator. And I mean, it goes all the way through our city staff, and I think it's really important to hang on to that.
I don't disagree with you at all, and I think that's completely fair.
Thank you. Go ahead, councilmember.
Sorry, I, I should have clarified because my, you know, we've said a couple, or said a couple times, and I just want to make sure that I'm on the record, that, that a convicted felon, I'm okay. And that may sound weird, but what I'm saying is that if they're, they've done their time and they're, you know, my bigger issue is someone that has active, open, you know, warrants, that's really, that's, that's where I'm at. So I want to make sure and clarify, I'm all for rehabilitation and that side of, you know, the equation. So I felt like I needed to clarify that.
Clarification, yes.
Jason, I think the clarification is appreciated, thank you. All right, so I'm just going to say it out loud because I have a microphone here. Is there a motion to approve this? Okay, there is no motion to approve, which means that only one of two things could happen. There'd be a motion to decline it, AKA deny it, or we can request additional information. And so rather than simply slam the door shut on this opportunity, because we've had good experiences with something very similar, what I'm going to do is have staff go ahead and communicate back with the agencies, let them know that we simply do not have the ability to approve it, what has been brought forward the way that it is, and talk with them about putting back in what was there before.
Yep.
And that, that is really important to our community and that we are committed to helping people, and we need to make certain we're balancing community needs with, you know, with people's needs as well.
Absolutely. I think that's all fair and I'm happy to get those answers from the council and look forward with this next month.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and so the soonest you'll see this come back is September 10th, and I, I think you've heard, I, just in the, in the tone of the voices that I just heard here, that's an honest and sincere, thank you. We, we, the council and, and what I'm hearing truly appreciates everything that this program is doing, and we're just simply asking that the state, the county, whomever it is that's working with us, work with us to, to add back in these basic controls.
Controls.
Yeah, and there, there's safeguards.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, there, it's not to control, but it's to safeguard and reduce liability for all, not just legal, but also just to, to reduce, reduce potential risk that something might happen.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, councilmembers, I really appreciate the conversation on this. Rachel, thank you very much for walking us through this, and we'll look forward to hearing more maybe as early as September 10th.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, that'll be councilmember reports. So we're going to go ahead and start off there on the end with councilmember Fisher this evening.
Okay.
I'm going to go down the line so you can be ready this evening, no surprises. I like to do surprises, but not tonight.
Parade day weather was horrible, got wet, but it was still fun. It's disappointing to see about a quarter of the attendance, you know, just because of weather. It's always nice seeing all kinds of people out there and running around and doing a bunch of fun things. And we have also continued our pickleball lane, just to let you know.
Nice. Councilmember Walker.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, parade was awesome. Public Works crushed it as usual, so did the chamber, always appreciative of their work around the fair, around the parade. Went to the fair yesterday with my family and, and it was wonderful as well, so yeah, I don't have much. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councilmember Foulter.
Wet parade, wet fair. I was there yesterday also, Josh Turner, oh my goodness. I think all the females in the audience just swooned all together. It was beautiful. Anyway, it was lovely. Josh Turner. Anyway, I'll just leave it right there, thanks.
All right, on that, councilmember Scarborough.
How can I follow that? Yeah, it was wet, but it was fun. I would like to ask Jody to ask the chamber what they want to do with all the car signs, she's got the box, do we want to consolidate them in one place? And I have mine and I have Kevin's as well, so that. I would like to know from the police department what happened with the three big trucks with the three big pieces of equipment on it that were there and then refused entry? And perhaps the, the reason why, because we got an inappropriate salute from one of them on the way out.
So I can provide a little bit of background, but I'll turn to...
That's all I've got anyway.
Perfect. And it isn't police, it's Jacob.
Personally, Jacob?
So the, what ended up happening, and you'll see it in your email from Deborah, was that we, these, these vehicles are very, very long, very, very big, and required moving barricades and moving people in order to make a, a turn or something like that. And so they had been informed, I'm told by others, that they couldn't bring those large vehicles. They went ahead and registered to be in the parade. They had already been told, sorry, we can't accommodate these large vehicles without moving a whole bunch of people, and the vehicles ended up showing up. Jacob or Deborah, do you have anything else to add or clarify that I might have got wrong based on what I understood?
No, I would just add that...
Tell me to the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I think you're up next anyway. We'll call you Scott Peterson though, because that's the name.
Peterson's more in shape than I am, so I'll go with that. Just for the record, that, that group came to the parade, I believe it was two years ago, had to exit out the Main Street corridor, so you had to remove all of the blockages, barricades, and people that were on Main Street at the intersection of Lakely, had to drive straight out because the operator of the rig informed me personally, as I was riding on the truck, that they couldn't make the left turn. That's not suitable, given our current increase in safety and awareness, as requested by the police department. We placed blockages, physical blockages, not just barricades, but loaders, trucks and trailers, and some other things that we borrowed from the federal Department of Homeland Security, maybe? Anyway, there are more things in the road to protect the people that are watching the parade, and that was not a suitable solution for the long term, so that's...
Okay, the explanation is, is absolutely suitable. If, if in fact these people were told that they couldn't and showed up anyway, clarifies it for me. I wanted to make sure that they weren't told they could and then got here and told they couldn't. So thank you for the explanation.
Sure.
You can stay there, but we're going to go to the next one. Councilmember Gamble?
Yeah, I was bummed. It's the first time I've had to miss a parade in, in quite a, quite a while.
State try.
Which I know, actually, I made out on both sides of the weather equation, because my family was at the gorge on Friday night, which, which was evacuated twice for the lightning strike and a fire and all that. And I was supposed to be there. And then the parade, which I always go in my, I've told this story, but my, my niece, who you guys are aware, hydrocephalus especially, that she waits all year for that thing. So I thought I was going to be disowned as an uncle, that we weren't doing it this year, but she was like, I wouldn't want to go anyway, it's raining. Because we always are outside. I'm like, so, I made out, it was bad for, I mean, I wish the weather would have been better, but my niece is good with me and I was able to be with my family for our Saturday event over in Spokane. So anyway, it sounds like it was a, it was a great time, but I won't miss it next year, I think.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to staff and department reports. We're going to start off with apparently Director Jacob tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. A couple of things in the Public Works report for this month. The one I really want to touch on with the council is the rekind of finalized report that came out of the downtown parking assessment that we completed some time ago. It's been in the hopper and has finally made it to the top of the heap. Back in April, we presented the information to P3, had a discussion there, kind of a summary of that is in the report, but I'll just touch on the highlights of it. Not much has changed downtown as far as parking goes, at least since the 1990s. I would surmise that that actually goes back maybe twenty to thirty more years before that, but we don't have the records to support it that I looked up, so therefore, just going to have to go with my guess on that one. There's a significant demand for parking on Main Street in the promenade, which everyone here is aware of. We've all experienced that looking for that spot downtown. There's a surplus of parking in the areas surrounding the Main Street promenade, which I suspect most of us have also noticed when trying to park downtown. And visitors to the downtown may perceive a parking shortage because of this. Ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of those surveyed for, as part of this project, indicated that they would not be willing to walk more than two blocks in order to get to their downtown destination. So therein lies the majority of the perception of the problem. There's a, a parking shortage in the area where people want to park, and there's a surplus in the areas where people aren't necessarily super interested in parking. So with that, the report has some recommendations about what can be done. Some of them include improvements to the streetscapes in the blocks surrounding the area, and lighting, streetscape improvements, parking improvements, increases in parking enforcement, and then finally, a willingness by the city to engage with downtown groups should any come forward in order to request changes to existing parking standards, so...
All right. Mayor, oh, go ahead, councilmember Scarborough.
Might I add too, that they might mark on the street, side streets that, you know, white lines where there's parking spots, so somebody doesn't park in the middle and take one and a half. And maybe signs on Main Street saying parking point that way, or public parking point to the direction is available.
Thank you. Any other questions for Public Works Director?
Yeah, I got to brag a little bit now, I got the mic. So other things that are in the report, obviously, we're flushing the water system, which is fun to watch, it's not all that much fun to do, but it's, it's a good time when there's water flowing out of hydrants. And then last but not least, actually, second to last, we have received recommendations for $1.3 million in transportation grants through PSRC. That includes some sidewalk final link improvements on the Blueberry Lane segment, or 154th, depending on what you want to call it, between 179th and 154th. That'll be the final piece of that sidewalk that we've built out over the last seven to ten years, extending from Park Place Junior High all the way down to a very heavily populated area of the city. So it is multifamily residential housing that's in there. I think that's going to be a fantastic improvement. We're a few years out from that, but it's good news to know that we're recommended for the grant. And then today, some flashy signals went up at a whole bunch of crosswalks in town. I don't know that they've been programmed yet, so they might not be live, but you'll notice as you drive down Main Street at, I believe, the Roundabout Monroe Christian School crossing and the crossing at what used to be Frank Wagner Elementary, for those of you that remember that, have, all have additional rapid, oh, let's see, rectangular rapid flashing beacons placed at them now. So they may be operational at this point, they may not, but more to come as those work their way throughout this city. That was my report, thank you, Mayor.
Really fancy word for blinky lights.
Yeah, blinky lights.
Councilmember Scarborough.
You were going to tell us about the airport, Public Works, oh, is that Lance?
That's Community Development, and I'm sure he'll be up here to talk in a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for Jacob? All right, thank you very much. Chief Jolly's not here this evening to present, so please take a look at his report in the packet. If you have any questions, please go ahead and reach out to me and Administrator Knight, and we will get responses back to you. Community Development Report, Director Bailey.
Community Mayor, members of the council. The July report for community development is in your packet. I'll cover a few highlights as I, as I typically do. The project highlight for this, for this past month is, we're, we're highlighting five different new businesses. The Starbucks, Global Spice Grocery, the Wendy's, which seems to make this list often, but I guarantee they are moving forward. It's not us holding them up. The blazing Korean barbecue and the sushi spot, all, all but the last one are locations that are right off of Highway Two. The last one, the sushi spot, is in downtown on Main Street. One other highlight I wanted to provide this evening was, now that the primary season is over, I hope folks have noticed that the vast majority of signs are down. It's always a little bit of a struggle, but we, we tried to get public information and education out prior to the election, letting people know what the rules are for the election signs, and making sure that we're contact, we're staying in contact with each one of the, the campaigns. And I think that it's really worked because it was, there was a noticeable lack of signs post, post-primary. One other update, I'm not sure that we had, I don't know if I had mentioned this before, we, we have a new, new-ish building inspector who has gone through training, in the field training with one of our existing staff. And during that period, we were not doing inspections on Fridays, and we are doing inspections now, so improving our customer service and getting through inspections faster. I did want to provide, councilmember Scarborough had mentioned, take an opportunity to provide two, two updates, community development related to council. One is the PUD project at First Airfield. I think I've mentioned before, we, they did submit for a development agreement. We've gone through the process to get really first round of comments on the development agreement from staff. So the next step will be communicating with, with the PUD on those comments and likely making some modifications to the development agreement. Just a reminder for process, the, the development agreement does go through council at a public hearing, and it's a little bit different. Typically, what's, what comes to council from community development or legislative actions, just wanted to remind everybody... Um, just wanted to remind everybody this is quasi judicial. So it does, it does have some requirements and sort of harking back to our discussion about ethics code. Um, and the appearance, appearance of fairness takes for quasi judicial and particularly ex parte contacts, which I won't go into detail. If anybody asks questions about that, I would refer them to our attorney. But just be aware that, um, this is a little bit of a different proceeding than we typically do for, um, community development actions with, um, with council. And the other update that you may have noticed, we had a, a agenda item initially, um, scheduled for this evening to, uh, discuss the downtown code amendments, which had come to council for, for action. I'm not exactly sure how long I was not at that meeting. In, in discussion and some other things that have occurred in downtown, we've decided to, to pull back a little bit. We're adding a few things and some modifications to those code amendments. So we're actually, because we're making those modifications, we'll be taking those back to Planning Commission and then we'll be bringing them back to City Council for, for final action.
So I'll just be a little bit more clear on the, um, on what the last item that he just mentioned. Last week I had received some queries about, um, uh, some things with the downtown. And, um, I, uh, spent some time over the course of Thursday night and Friday, uh, talking with a variety of, uh, different people. Um, I think you've probably received some emails about a business that is above the Historical Society. Um, I, uh, realized that because the item related to the promenade had come to the council, council gave direction for Mayor and staff to, um, to make some revisions to it, take it through Planning Commission. Planning Commission took a look at what was proposed, um, about, uh, what you originally saw. Place some guardrails there. Uh, staff took it to EDAB. EDAB didn't quite agree with the guardrails. And as a result of that, coming together with, uh, some concerns that were expressed about this business above the Historical Society, um, it just happened that, that everything came together where it was like, look, we could probably take a look at this issue with this, uh, with the business above the Historical Society now. Cause it's, it's all part of the same geographic area dealing with the same subject matter. So if you are getting, um, emails from anybody about, what is it called? The hidden something?
Hidden room.
Yeah, the hidden room. Um, understand that I, I spent considerable time working with folks and with staff to have that incorporated to going back to the Planning Commission. So I would anticipate that you could see a Planning Commission recommendation as early as what? Late September or so?
Ideally, yes.
And I've communicated that information with Historical Society. Um, and, uh, they're gonna communicate that with their renter. Also, um, I did, I informed them that, uh, this is not an assurance one way or another. There's still a process that, that this sort of proposal needs to go through. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, council makes a decision. And, um, also that, you know, it could be permitted, it could be conditional. All of these things, you know, you need to make your own decisions in the shorter term, um, uh, on, on what you want to do with that is what I shared with Historical Society. Just, you know, uh, so that being a private business arrangement, they'll be communicating with the renter and, and everything like that. But just for your awareness, um, that's where things are and I just wanted to share that with you. Um, do you have any questions for me on that? All right. Council, um, did you have anything, Scarborough?
No, that was that council.
Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, Lance, I'm sorry you told me that this was your subject, but, um, does that mean that the airfield has sold to PUD? Or the PUD is still waiting for clarification on some of the things you talked about before they actually buy the property?
They, they have not purchased the property yet and, and I, I don't know exactly what their milestone is to, to purchase it, but I know that they have not yet.
Does that put, uh, does that put anything back on the council because of the votes we've had in the past on it? Uh, to where we say it's, it's no longer optional because we had another idea for that property as well? I mean, the whole idea of saying, changing the ordinance that we talked about was that we didn't want to negate the property owner's right to sell the property under the guidelines that they had, you know, been working under. The ordinance in essence would have changed those guidelines. It's like changing the rules midstream. But now that it hasn't come to fruition, are we open to thinking about changing our ordinance? To back to what we were trying to do with the property before this all came up? Is that clear to you, Mayor?
Um, so I, one of the things here that I'm really cautious about is that this is a quasi judicial decision. Uh, this is something that involves a, a private, um, interaction between, uh, two property owners. You know, a, a would be property owner and a property owner. And so, um, what I'd like to do is just check with Zach before we answer questions and, and what it is, is would be appropriate to discuss in this forum.
Well, if you definitely want to answer it tonight, we can, we can pass it on.
Let's, oh, thank you. Okay. Zach, um, Councilmember Scarborough did clarify that if, uh, this is not the right forum, we can always, um, have a conversation in a more appropriate forum or.
That was my recommendation, Mr. Mayor. And to follow, um, Lance's earlier comments, with respect to the quasi judicial nature of the development agreement, um, process, the, and, and it's, um, that the fact that it's potentially subject to the appearance of fairness doctrine. I, I think the important takeaway for the council as this matter is pending before it is just to remember to keep an open mind, uh, and to look and act as though you are keeping an open mind, refrain from saying or doing anything that indicates any type of, of bias or prejudgment. And we'll provide a more thorough briefing to the council procedurally as the proposal is more, comes more into focus with some of the, the iterations between staff and the, uh, and the proponent. Um, but with, with those just basic parameters in mind, that, that would be my recommendation, uh, for now. And, and as I said, we'll be happy to come back with some more specific recommendations for how the council should handle this.
All right. Does that take care of it? All right. Any other questions for, um, Director Bailey? I'll play Director Lawrence.
I'll go by either.
I appreciate that. Thanks for the understanding. Thank you very much, Lance. Uh, next report then we have is the City Clerk Records Department with Clerk Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, we did our second quarter report and, uh, I kinda wanted to just, uh, reiterate some of the stuff that was mentioned during the J-Lark report, uh, presentation earlier. And one of them is that, um, the number of requests doesn't necessarily indicate the number of requests, meaning that one request can have multiple facets to it. And one example that they gave me during a break was one request, 35 pages, 20 to 30 points, specific like I want this, or I want that, or I want that. So just kind of keep that in mind when you're looking at, you know, some of the numbers that the, that the records officers provide you. Um, otherwise, the other thing in the report that I wanted to highlight was, uh, the case law update that is on the last page. Um, I really appreciate Patricia and Sherry and our other records liaisons for attending training and keeping up to date on case law. Um, this one was called the Cousins Case. And basically what came out of it is the state or the, the courts are dictating exactly what we need to say in our closure letters. So immediately after this came out and we attended the training, we started working with our attorneys. We crafted some new language for our closure letter, letters, trained our liaisons and, um, reduced our liabilities. So. That was it.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Next report is Finance Department with Greg Trimmer.
Oh, it'll be me.
We'll go with Deborah Knight.
Yes, thank you. I, I know, I, I love the numbers though, so I'm always happy to give the, the Finance Department reports. A couple of things to note in the report, and this is reporting through July, is that, um, retail sales tax is used to lag on our budget. Five out frequently, one percent, you're at a hundred thousand dollars at the beginning of July. Greg Trimmer, our interim Finance Director, did dig into the numbers a little bit, just to better understand the trend. And what's really interesting is, is that general retail sales tax is, um, spot on, it's about six million. And, and we're about six million. What's lagging is our construction sales tax, which I suppose is a very surprising benefit in the current housing market. Um, we did see a big influx of permit applications for homes, but that was really as a result of changes to the energy code. So a lot of the national builders and others wanted to get their permits in before that change in order to avoid having to do redesigns of their, their housing plans. So we are anticipating then going forward into 25 and 26, that trend will continue. So, um, just stay, keep, keep that in mind as we continue to move forward. On the positive note, in the general fund, um, some of our revenues are actually trending, um, above what we originally estimated. Admissions tax, utility tax, miscellaneous revenues, which is basically interest earnings because we are able to earn significantly more interest out of the current, um, money that we have in the past. So continue to watch for that. We're all 63%, uh, 63% of our revenues and the target is 58.3. So we're running just a little bit ahead of the target with our construction sales taxes down. What's interesting is that although construction sales tax is down, um, our real estate excise tax is up. So, uh, we would expect to see those things kind of trending in the same direction, but they're not, um, in this case. So sales, um, of property are actually up compared to what we had originally anticipated. And what's interesting about that, when I checked the two numbers, we're down about 150,000 in construction sales tax and up about 150,000 in, um, real estate excise tax. The important thing to keep in mind is that retail sales tax is used for general fund operations. That's our operating budget. Real estate excise tax is used for capital. So we're running a little bit ahead of the capital budget and a little bit, um, behind the operating budget. So that's just something to, to note as you're taking a look at the Finance Department report.
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
Um, I guess I, I don't, the statement you made about we expect those trends to continue on the construction side for 25 and 26, what leads us to believe that I would actually think the opposite. I would think we're at the peak right now because the Fed's signaling that they're gonna lower rates. And if we're talking about an annexation that would realize itself at 25 and 26 with over 200 homes. I mean, from my perspective, we actually looks like it may go the other direction compared to what we've been experiencing over the last year.
Yeah, great question. This is a bullet of crystal ball. So as far as the annexation is concerned, those homes still need to be built.
Correct.
The land needs to be subdivided. I wouldn't expect that we would actually see construction on that property until probably closer to.
26. Okay. Well, then that would make sense for, uh, cause what, all I'm hearing is 25, 26. I'm thinking that would still fall in the twenties, potentially in a 26, depending upon rates.
I think the annexation would be complete, but they still just subdivide the land.
Okay.
So it's still to go through the land entitlement process. That takes about a year and a half to two years. And then they have to get into construction, and then they take some in another 18 months.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Let's go to, to the, uh, let's go to the Administrator Extended Agenda.
All right. So, uh, looking forward on the extended agenda, we will be canceling the first meeting in September. That's September 3rd, so we won't be getting a safety committee for a regular session for one week. Um, for the 10th, as it stands right now, we will be, um, receiving a presentation from the municipal boards across the whole district capital plan. And they have some, some big dreams, um, that they're looking to build to do some improvements to every great home on the road. On the consent agenda, we have the, the usual not payable, meeting minutes payable. We do have an interlocal agency agreement with the city and our emergency management services. And then we just have the Department of Parks and Extending Agenda at this moment. It does sound like though it's possible to maybe bring back then the, um, the possible people who are involved in this whole situation. That's all we have for the extended agenda.
Any questions on the extended agenda? All right. Let's go ahead and go on to the council, uh, the City Administrator Report.
Uh, so just a reminder for council that the Blueberry Children's Park ribbon cutting ceremony is planned for Wednesday, the 28th at 5:00 PM. If you haven't had a chance to, um, drive by and take a look yet at that place structure, it is, um, really beautiful. It's phenomenal. It really makes a statement, I think, uh, something that is gonna be a big benefit to the community overall. So we're excited for that ribbon cutting. Uh, just a reminder too, that we did get funding, um, for that project from, uh, Summer County and Stanlo, about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, they had asked us during the pandemic if there were any potential projects that we can invest in using county ARP dollars. And, uh, this was a project that we had suggested. So really excited again for the partnership that we've been able to have over a number of years with the county when it comes to typically to our parks. Uh, and then there is a potential public hearing, um, on Ornament 00624 on September 34th. Oh, look, we have a four on the board. Got it. Thank you. So is anybody planning to miss that meeting, 24? We had also, I think, previously announced too, that we're coordinating with Bailey Construction on the municipal campus improvements. And, uh, we are working with them to, uh, coordinate a council tour. Initially, I had suggested that we, um, tour that, um, site sometime at the end of September, but for liability reasons, uh, they're encouraging us to wait until the, the book is on the building and we're able to safely tour on the inside. They already got something scheduled on their plans. So that looks like it's gonna be moved to be in October or early November. So stay tuned for an opportunity to take a look inside of the municipal campus. That's correct. That is not going to happen yet. It's gonna be moved to the end of October or.
Okay. Anything else?
You talked about first. No, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Huh? Yeah, Mayor. Budget, yeah. Um, all right. Uh, first and foremost, uh, we've got Labor Day coming up this weekend. Um, and I've got a proclamation in there for Labor Day. I just, just again, uh, feel free to read the proclamation, but I think every single one of us knows that we couldn't do anything here if it weren't for the work that, uh, the people that work for you, that work for us do. And so, um, just again, for those of you that, that have jobs where you work for others and everything, thank you for what you do. And for, uh, everybody else here, if you could just share my, my deep appreciation um, for the work that they do to make us successful, I greatly appreciate it. So thank you all. You picked up your flag? Okay. All right. All right. Uh, so, uh, so Labor Day, um, uh, budget. So one of the things that we're spending a lot of time on right now is budget. Um, Greg and, uh, Deborah are doing a great job at, especially at the both macro and detailed level on the budget. Um, staff has put together the senior leadership team and I'm sure others have put a lot of work into, uh, the budget. And so, again, uh, a lot of the work that we're doing this time of year is around crunching numbers, looking at requests, looking at needs, uh, projecting out our contractual obligations and things like that. Um, so again, thank you to our staff for, for all the work that they're doing around that. Um, the parade was great. Yes, wet, um, but, uh, still it was a parade. It was wonderful. Seeing everybody that was able to make it. And then, um, the parade, thank you. Just a reminder, uh, there is a thank you for, um, that council members and mayor will frequently attend with the chamber uh, this coming Thursday night. And so Jody's gonna go ahead and do a notice of potential quorum. Um, with that said, are, who here is gonna be there? Okay. So we have at least two and Kevin's usually there. I think Tammy, high probability of being there. So I, I think we do have a probability of a quorum. So thank you. Um, also on Friday, I, I attended a ribbon cutting, uh, for the soccer fields out at Fairfield. Um, the Sky River Soccer Association has put in irrigation out there, which is great. Um, but in addition to the ribbon cutting for the soccer fields, there are three cricket fields going on out there. And so going to what Jake and also Kevin had talked about, um, the, it, it, these are people from the Redmond Cricket Association and, um, they very much want to bring cricket out here. So there are other properties. fields, and the comment made to me from the person who was there, from the cricket club, was that they would like to make Monroe the cricket capital of the Pacific Northwest. So anyway, that was really great. Councilmember Walker? I've got two of you at the end right now, so did you want to say something?
You're right on the cricket thing. They travel to, I think, Texas, they said, most of the time for their tournaments, and they said there's not a place up here where these professional teams can come, so that's a big opportunity for Monroe for lodging considerations as well.
Thank you. And then Blueberry Ribbon Cutting, that is also, what is that, tomorrow? So, okay, I know that the car is going to go the right way when I get into it later. So we've got that tomorrow. I look forward to anybody that can make it tomorrow. Item of note, both with the cricket fields and soccer fields, and also with the Blueberry, Sam Low, and the county council and county executive have been investing in our region, and I just greatly appreciate the investments that they've been making here. So, you know, thank you, Councilmember Low, and thank you, Executive Summers. Finally, the email, I'm hoping that you have a chance to take a look at an email response that I sent to somebody. The person that I sent that to had sent me, I think, five emails last week, three of them Monday, Tuesday-ish, and then an additional two, I think, on Thursday. We, you know, we do our best to be responsive, and certainly, anytime I get an email from somebody, I send it directly to staff, and then staff starts working on it. You'll see in there that a lot of work was done last week to respond to the concerns that were brought up to me and that I shared with staff. I haven't received a response related to that email, but just, if you have any questions about it, feel free to let me know. I feel that we have done a lot, the council has done a lot, the staff has done a lot, nonprofits in the downtown, whether it's the Chamber or human service providers or other organizations have done a lot in our downtown to bring life to our downtown, and I, you know, there is a partnership there, right? It's, government can only do so much, and we're trying really hard with our Economic Development Specialists to try to get businesses in the downtown, building owners in the downtown to engage. And anyway, just sharing with you there that I feel that we've done a lot in our downtown, and if you have any concerns about the email that I sent out or want more information, please let me know. In the meantime, if you've got other thoughts on things we could or should be doing in the downtown, let me know. So I think that is all that I have to share right now. Councilmember Campbell, you had your flag up. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, it's nice having the transit come closer. Yeah. Yep. All right. Anything else for this evening? All right. If there are, if there's nothing else, I will say that we are adjourned unless there's objection, and before I stumble over my words again. All right. There being no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great week, and I'll see some of you tomorrow, and...